If you have phones or pagers, please silence them. We're gonna start with roll call. Can y'all hear us? Can everybody hear us? Can you?
You got that one right though?
Are y'all quick on it?
Turn this way.
I am.
Are you?
Bob, what's the matter, Bob? I wasn't even looking at it.
Try to get him to come on. Still no.
We don't allow...
Tracy, you got nothing? Okay, we're gonna start with roll call. Commissioner Yauer, Commissioner Rosevollis. Judge Shaw here. Commissioner Shandell.
Here.
Commissioner Hummel.
Here.
County clerk's office.
Here.
Please stand and join us in opening prayer as they stand in for the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, we thank you for all the blessings that you send our way. We ask you to please take care of our military and bring them home safely. We ask you to help us make the best decisions for the county. Amen.
Amen. The pledge of allegiance is to the right, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda, so it needs to be heard.
I have one.
You have one?
Yes, Ms. Paul.
Well, wait, before we start, Ms. Paul, are you here for the weigh station?
She's up there.
Where is she? I can't see her. Are you here for the weigh station? Can we skip and let the techs got guys do their stuff and then we'll come back? Would that be okay? Number eight on the agenda is gonna be a discuss, approve, disapprove, a multiple use agreement between Karnes County and the state of Texas regarding the weigh station. And I had this on the agenda last time, and you guys had some questions, and y'all wanted to talk to Paul and Danny, so they agreed to be here this morning. And so, the questions that y'all had for 'em, you can go ahead and ask them. Y'all can come up to the podium. I guess that we were trying to figure out if there was anything... Here, Sheriff.
Is this working?
I've talked a lot, not a lot.
I think so. Whispering more.
Did y'all bring one?
No.
Do you have a copy?
Oh, no, ma'am.
Here. I made the link. Well, that way they ask y'all something specifically for exact, go with us.
Look at that also.
Hey, address. How's it going?
Okay, my first question is on an opening statement there, design and construction, number one. County will prepare and provide work construction plans for the facility and will provide construction workers part of the set plan. Are y'all providing the plans at no cost, or we have to pay for having the plans grown up, or what is it?
We're providing the plans.
Okay.
So is that something we're gonna need to change in there, Paul? Or will they not take it unless we just agree to the standard agreement with like...
No, that's... We can change some of the wording in that, yes.
Change it to say that you would be partying.
There wasn't a real detailed set of plans that, you know, we needed, and we kind of had a sketch, you know, I think that we showed you last time, that I think was sufficient to get it built.
And you're the engineer, so we wouldn't leave you.
Yeah, but you went A and M.
So we can change that. Now, are you guys gonna change that?
I can get Daniel to change it.
Because they won't let us change it. The only thing that we can change is what's highlighted in gray.
Right.
It won't let us change any of y'all's writing.
Okay.
So if y'all can change that part for us.
Okay. And number seven, termination. I haven't looked this in a week, but anyway, a question about, has any of these ever terminated? Abandoned?
Well, I mean, I think one of the possibilities we're determining is say if we ever come up with a widening project, you know, and the actual weigh station would be in the way or something like that. I mean, that'd be the example of one, but I don't know what other reasons would actually terminate it. That's all. That's just one off topic I think of that may end up... And that's something where, you know, the other locations, we've actually gone and coordinated and just bought, you know, if it did come up, you bought another place and actually just moved the weigh station. But I don't know what else would actually, you know, would make it terminate.
Yeah, we don't have a four-lane highway there already, so a widening project is probably nothing more than work for...
Not in our lifetime.
No.
I mean, I think it just gives either party an opportunity of something arose, you know, to terminate the agreement.
Everybody go right and candidate going to eight or nine thousand feet, six-lane highway
I know exhibit eight attached. Paul, you couldn't give me D, C, P, E, right?
Exhibit A?
A is attached, I'm sorry. Attachment A is exhibit E. Meet A, B, C, and D.
Yeah, 'cause one of them is a copy of the actual plans that gets attached.
I missed that, Paul. I'm sorry, what?
One of them is a copy of the plans, you know, that'll be attached to the back of this, and that's something we'll have on here, the layout. The meets and bounds, I talked with them, they said we can just pull that off. It's basically our state right of ways, and we could pull that off.
So now you can take that out of there, okay?
Yeah.
And approved construction plans, will you guys, we'll take that out too?
Right.
And certificate of insurance.
Well, we'll attach it. It'll be on here. It's something that we'll provide, though.
Okay. What else? That's gonna be it?
Now, that certificate of insurance, does that, you know, did y'all have any issues with that? It's basically a form there, and I don't know if Daniel provided that to y'all, but just saying that y'all have insurance, if you're out there in our right of way doing some kind of work, right?
So we'll provide that.
Right, some kind of verification, you're an insurance provider.
Well, I can get that from you. Is she here?
Not here.
Yes.
Can I get that from you?
Yes.
E, define.
No. She has given the insurance card.
Does anybody else have any questions? So I guess then that's all we need. Oh, and then on the top, it says state of Texas, county of Travis. Can y'all put us in there? We're blocked there too.
Okay.
We can only change gray areas.
Let me check and see. See, that might be something, because this is made with Austin, it's actually made with states. It's made with the states, so that's why they're saying the county of Travis, because our headquarters in Austin.
Okay, let me know if I...
If we do anything at all, we gotta go there.
Yeah.
That's probably all right.
So do we have any other changes that y'all are, any other questions?
How long do we want to think on the bills?
Well, timeframe wise, we should, we're hoping around February, and maybe start with the light, and between now and then, we need to actually get some more material out there. I think the county was gonna go ahead and do the, put the material out for us as far as a base, and then from there, we'll go ahead and pave it when we do that, when we do the intersection at the light, so...
You know, there was some material that was dumped there, which is not gonna be nearly enough, but we've got huge stockpiles there at 123, in business 123. There's some material there that would be available, you know, just to kind of get a base course down.
So we can get like Jeff to haul it from there over to that place?
Yes. Yes.
And so, when will y'all have this ready, with those changes?
Once this resolution is completed, then we send this to Austin for the signatures.
Right, but like, the changes that we make in there that we just made?
Mm-hmm.
When will you have those ready?
Uh, let me give it to Daniel and see. We should be able to give them like Monday or Tuesday next week.
Bob, do we have to put this on the agenda again?
From your view...
Or can we adopt it with the amendments?
Yes, and authorize the judge to sign. The judge's signature will be on the quick.
Yes.
So can we do that?
You let him motion.
Whenever y'all have a ready, y'all can call him.
What we need to do is provide, you know, have a complete package for y'all, you know, with the layouts and everything.
If any exhibits are not available, just mark it not available or not attached, so nothing's lost.
So, but we can adopt it today, and then I can get that from you with the changes we made, is that okay?
Yes.
Because you know what the changes are.
Are y'all okay by that?
All right, I'm making motion and we accept this motion from you, stranger, with the state of Texas, with the changes discussed, and authorize Judge Shaw to sign.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Danny, Paul, thanks. Thanks so much.
Thank y'all. Well, we'll start for the fusion on the first.
No, no, well, that's already been done.
Thank y'all, appreciate it. Long time coming. They've been working on Jeff for about fifteen years.
All in favor, say aye.
All right. Long time coming.
Aye. There was no opposed, so it'd have to be all in.
And then Barbara, I guess once we get this...
We do the same.
I guess once we get this fully approved...
No, Bobby, who would want to do that? Go ahead.
It'll have to go to Austin. Once we get it fully approved, we can kind of get with Jeff and, you know, as far as what needs to be done.
And just call me when y'all have it, and I can come over there and just sign it. Because I can find money all over there. And then we'll get with Jeff.
Okay.
Did you hear that, Jeff?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
We're good. Thank you, thank you very much. Let's go back to citizens to be heard, number five.
Hello, I was here to speak briefly about item number ten in regards to our representative for the removal and restoration of the courthouse. I'd just like to bring to your attention that I think it would be in the best interest of our county to find an independent professional liaison that is familiar with contracts and construction knowledge. If you think the annex was an issue, this can run into a runaway campaign really quick. And all the research that we've done with various counties, the overrun costs were phenomenal. In some cases, counties almost ended up broke. So, we really need to have a person representing our county for the best interest of our county to control the cost, and I think it would be a wise move to consider somebody professional in that area.
Paying, paid or not paid?
I think we would be able to pay them.
Call, address it, call, address it when we get there. On the citizen's order, let that go.
You can... Well, that's no problem. I wouldn't think that the county would personally have the funds. I mean, we are in a position where we're able to do this, and everybody is aware of that. We actually paid a person for the annex building. I don't know how successful that was, but to hire a professional and a qualified person, I would think that the county could come up with the funds to pay somebody to represent our best interest, because as in any situation, that expense would probably be far less than what our unnecessary cost and overrun might run if we didn't have somebody representing us properly. Because if you, you know, even as far as the governor's mansion in Austin, you know, they're supposed to be capped at twenty million, they're not, they're months away from being finished, and they're way over twenty million. So, if you go to Wharton County, you go to Adeska County, you look at any of them, none of them came within budget, and it can easily run into a big problem if we don't have somebody representing our interests properly. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Paul. Number six is the reading of minutes. I read them. I don't remember seeing anything, except some type of, that didn't affect anything, so it didn't affect how anything was. Did you see anything? I wasn't here for the last one, whatever date that was, or one of them, or two of them. It's in there. I wasn't here to read.
I wrote notes on here, but they're just...
I wasn't here for the...
On number twenty-two...
What date?
Uh, let me...
Oh, I guess it was Monday.
On November the eighteenth. Remember we talked about that? It wasn't a GMC animal control truck, it was a Ford F-150. We made the change, we went ahead and went with it, and we made the change when we voted on it, when we voted to accept it as F-150, as everything's fine right there, right? It saves it in the minutes.
It's amended.
Right, that's one.
It's amended.
Besides that, I didn't...
The next item, number seven, oh, wait, I'm sorry, is everybody reading the recording? I apologize.
The typo that you called, do we have to?
I don't know.
It's fine. It's fine. Besides that, everything looks fine.
So to review and or correct, number seven is to review and or correct Commissioner's court minutes for the month of November two thousand eleven, the eighteenth and the thirtieth.
Make a motion to accept minutes. I'll say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number nine on the agenda is to discuss, approve, disapprove, assigning Commissioner Yower as Judge Shaw's alternate for ACOG meetings and purposes, and I put that on here. Some of the ACOG days are conflicting with other meetings that we're having, and some other stuff that I'm doing, because I'm also on the task force. Well, Pete went to one of the ACOG meetings for me, and what I did was, is I, he wasn't approved by Commissioner's Court, so he couldn't vote for us. And so, Mr. Donnis asked me to, for alternates, to be able to do the Karnes County vote, we have to assign a person specifically to be able to do that vote. So I asked Pete if he went, if he would do, if he would go, would he do the vote for me? And he said he would, so I'm just asking for permission. It has to be passed through Commissioner's Court.
I make a motion to approve assigning Commissioner Yower as Judge Shaw's alternate for ACOG meetings and purposes.
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I will get that. Carol, we need a copy of that on your little thing, the fax to Dean, okay? If you can stamp one for him, just like before the minutes, like when somebody has a contract?
Yes.
Okay. Number ten on the agenda is to discuss, approve, disapprove, assigning Commissioner Carl Hummel as owner representative for phase one removal of the nineteen twenty-four mission and restoration of the west side of Karnes County courthouse per MJ Boyle contract, and Sue asked that we put that on there.
One of the items on the MJ Boyle contract is the owner's representative, and what they need, the both MJ Boyle and our architect, and the Texas Historical Commission is an official representative from the county. And this is not necessarily the project manager for the overall project, but it is the official representative, and that's why it needs to be, like, we thought it needed to be on the agenda. So at this point, Carl is most familiar with the project, and he's been to most of the meetings in Austin, and is, again, most familiar and would be a good representative for our county. And then at some point in time, if it's decided that a project manager is needed for phase one, you know, as we remove the wings, well, then that project manager can certainly be hired or appointed. But for now, we have a kickoff meeting scheduled for January third, and these different businesses and groups, contractors that we're working with, just need one official person to talk to as we move forward with the project.
I mean, as an unrepresented Carl, what kind of decisions are you making? I mean, you're not making decisions to spend more money or to do, I mean, we have to come back to court to...
You're overseeing the project. Start all the process.
Any money spent in addition to what's contracted will always be brought before the commission. He will be the lucky person to attend all the meetings and hopefully keep everyone informed of when the contractors are coming and what the status is. And in that case, you know, he is just the representative between these contractors and the court and the county, and it's up to him to keep everyone informed and make sure it goes well. And then as he makes these presentations, you know, any input that y'all have or anything you're concerned about, or definitely any finances, will be approved by the court, as always.
So he'll be acting as the liaison?
Right.
Kind of like Pete did for the annex building.
I guess. I'm not sure what else would be.
I disagree with Mr. Hummel, because Mr. Hummel has demonstrated that he is more aligned with the historical society than he is with the county. When Mr. Yower cut out a whole bunch of money on Mr. the architect's bill, he was questioned by Carl Hummel, not as to why and so forth, but why he only looked at the bills that came from the architect. And so he is aligned with the historical commission, I think, and historical society. I think this is a conflict of interest. I would suggest that you do not appoint Mr. Hummel to this position, because I think it's conflict of interest.
Is that your legal opinion as county attorney, Bob?
You damn right.
I think to be aligned is, you're saying is to be supportive of, just because he's supportive of this project, we need, we need an official who supports it, and I don't believe that's a conflict of interest if you support a project and would like to see it completed, to the best that...
You don't think we need a neutral person?
Carl can be the county's representative, and if you need a neutral person for a, as a project manager to come in, you know, that would be fine. But I do think that you need someone who is enthusiastic and supportive of the project to come out and meet with the contractors and meet with the historical commission. If the commission has the indication that we are still not supportive of this, you know, that's a bad reflection on our county, actually.
Well, Carl and you are related, are you not?
We are.
I'm related to you too, Bob.
The problem still is that Carl has demonstrated many times over of his alignment with the commissioners, with the historical commission, and that is a conflict of interest. He cannot be operating in the best interest of the commission and also represent the county. That is a conflict of interest. And I think he's already, are you a member of the society also?
No.
No, I think it's a mistake. Do whatever you need to, but I think it's a mistake.
Bob, I mean, just because you were against the restoration of the courthouse, you were against the annex, just because you don't like me, I mean, that's just your opinion. I mean, you're kind of overstepping your bounds here, because this is not legal advice, this is just your personal opinion, and it's just another personal attack from the county attorney, just like you sued the county treasurer.
Stay with this thing.
But I think, I think this is a time where the commissioners can vote, and if they feel like Carl would be a good representative and will bring the, primarily, he needs to bring the information back, and he needs to work with the commission and with the architect and with the contractors to share all this information. We're not hiding anything, we're not trying to accomplish anything that doesn't need to be done in order to accomplish the completion of the restoration, which is now our objective.
Well, you know, the court does need to start working together. I mean, the people spoke, it went out on bond election, they want it restored, you know, there's just so much bickering about little, little things. I mean, when are we gonna start working together and just moving forward for the county? You know, we all work for the county.
We really, we really need...
Why do you want to get on this thing so badly?
Bob, because I was for the restoration. I want to see it done.
Well, that's no more of the prejudice than I am. I was against it.
I know, but you're county attorney, Bob. You're, you're to do legal business.
I think we need a person who supports the project...
You don't sit on the court here, Bob. You don't make the decisions.
To be the liaison.
You're our legal representative.
That's right.
That's right, and it wasn't a legal issue.
Do we have a motion?
Certainly is. If it's a conflict of interest, it's personal. It's not personal, it's a legal, it's a, it's a conflict of interest. Even the citizens that spoke said, that was your...
This is, this is where I see it, and I mean, it's not, my opinion's gonna be, you know, skewed either way. Somebody's gonna say that I took a side or that I did something, regardless of what I say or what I do, it's going to be taken that way. And this is how I look at this. If this is the same thing that Pete was doing, nobody's giving Carl permission to spend any money, nobody's giving Carl permission to go out and sign anything for the county, nobody's giving Carl permission to take that project and do whatever he wants with it. Nobody's giving him that permission. We're giving him permission to go out, figure out what's going on, and come back and tell us, and I don't see anything wrong with that. I might not...
But that's what's happening.
I might not, I might not agree with how things have been done, or how some things have been done, but we're not giving him a checkbook. And, I mean, if some people are unhappy about how this restoration has taken place or what's going on, you know what? Voter apathy does not rest on top of the court. If you, if something passed that you didn't want to pass, then you should have been out there on that bond election day. You shouldn't be in here fussing at us today. All these matters should be settled, and we need to move forward. I might not agree with how we're moving forward, I might not agree with everything that's happening, but I don't see that Carl going to these meetings and hurting anything. Pete doesn't have time, I don't have time, Tracy doesn't have time, James doesn't have time, we have things falling down on top of us, we have roads buckling before us, we have problems in the annex. The annex is not running smooth. I mean, and we had a paid professional representative. We had staff. I mean, who are we gonna pay? What are we gonna do? The voters agreed to spend four million dollars. I'm not in agreement of spending more than four million dollars, but if Carl goes and spends four million dollars and we're back in here, I would say something to him. I mean, that's just my personal opinion. I don't, I don't, I don't see why we're still spinning a will, and we're gonna spin that will and spin that will, and I'm not saying it, but I will say this, Sue, in all due respect, you can't be in the courthouse. It's under construction and you're not employed, so please do not go in there. If you get hurt, we're in major trouble. So, you can send Carl in to go look and come back and tell you what's going on, but you can't go in there, okay?
Put a camera, right?
Yeah, he can walk around with a mining hat, as far as I'm concerned, with a camera on it for you, but you can't go in there, okay?
Okay.
It's under construction, and only county employees, and only people under insurance, and only people we have contracted by the county can go in there, because you're a citizen, and if we let you in there, we need to let every citizen in there, we need to be fair. So, please do not go in the courthouse.
Oh, I understand, that's fine.
And please leave my wires alone.
Your what?
So, that's just my theory. I'd like to hear y'all's discussion on that.
I'm gonna go ahead and tell y'all, sorry. You finished?
I'm finished, it's your turn.
All right. A decision, a decision like this is very important, and I like to make, give an explanation behind my decision. The people did speak, and they spoke, and the courthouse, they want it restored and everything, and that's fine, that's what they want. I'm always behind the people one hundred percent. But, and I'm not siding with anyone, because right now it's kind of like, you know, county attorney, the commissioner and everything, but I'm not siding with anyone. But the way I see it, I usually like to do my homework all the time. Honestly, I knew this was coming up and everything, I didn't have an, I didn't have an issue with anything, but since he is our legal representation, you know, he does, I mean, I cannot make a decision right now until I do my homework on it. Not that it is, I don't really understand what, the conflict of interest there, but I can't, within myself, honestly make a decision today and feel good about it when I walk out without doing my homework on it, because he is, he is our county attorney. He says it's a conflict of interest, before I make a decision on, I don't have a problem with you doing it at one hundred percent, I don't have a problem. And I wanted to go forward, and, you know, it would be great if you could go ahead and do it and everything, but because county attorney then, did say that, I need to look into it before, because I don't want to do anything that could hurt or will hurt the county in the future, so... Basically, what I'm telling you right now, that's, you know, I have, I have a problem with that until I do my homework and everything. I can't walk out here and make a decision, I would have to, you know, make the decision, you know what I'm, you know what I'm saying. I don't know if I'm trying, trying to be as nice as possible, and I'm not against the court on restoration, I'm for it, because that's what the people, I'm always behind I'm for it because that's what the people, I'm always behind the people. But if there's any, any kind of conflict of interest for Carl taking this, I don't know whether there is. I didn't think there was, but, you know, our county, our county attorney, he is our legal representation. And I usually, if he stands up and says something like that, I mean, and he's our county attorney.
Bob, maybe you could get us an attorney general opinion on what you just said.
Well, that's what I was basically gonna come up with.
Maybe you can get something in writing to attorney general opinion if you want.
Takes about six months.
Nothing.
Unless it's already one there. If there's not one there, you have to go through.
Because that's what I was gonna look into. Well, you know, I was gonna look into that to see if we had attorney general's opinion on it. Maybe three, there might be three or 10.
Bob, if this was on the agenda and if you felt like that, you could've gone to the government code and you couldn't call the attorney general, you could've done some research.
Again, this is working as a liaison. It's not, he has no control over checkbooks or anything else. He is just representing the court actually in these meetings. We have a kickoff meeting scheduled for January the 3rd and it is, you know, we would like to get moving with all this.
Who's we?
The we is MJ Boyle and Louis Fisher has said that they would, as they start this contract, which the commission has signed for MJ Boyle to move ahead with. Part of that contract is just for an owner's rep to help coordinate. He's not gonna have any other official responsibilities.
I mean, you're trying to make it look like, Bob, one commissioner has more authority than the other.
No, I'm not. What I'm saying is, I've urged you, I've urged you cross-examine Pete here because he had saved some $300, $3,000 on a bill that was created by you and Sue. And Pete got it off.
Bob, have you ever cost the county any money? You got a decision that you made?
Carl, really what, what we want to do now...
What, what do you think, Pete, though? All right. My opinion is someone has to represent the county. I don't feel like I have time. I have a lot of other things I'm working on. And I don't mind if Carl does. This is not forever. This is for phase one. It's not for the complete restoration of the courthouse. I mean, some of them are represented. And I think Carl will represent the county. I appreciate Ms. Hall's opinion that need professionals to look over. When we get into the full restoration, we definitely need...
Absolutely.
A lot of excitement.
If I have any questions, I could always ask Pete or Jane, Tracy, John.
But I, I will tell you this, and I, and I'm not picking at you, Carl, okay? If you come to us with these bills, you know we're gonna question them. I mean, you know that, that we have tight itis. You know we're gonna question every bill. You know that. And everybody's probably figured out by now, the first person I talk to every morning, the last person I leave is LaWanna. How much money did we spend today? Where did it go? How did it go there? Why did it go there? And so we're gonna be on top of it. There's been times nobody was on top of these bills. They got out of hand. And where do we start and where do we stop? I mean, this thing's gotta go forward. I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not siding with anybody. And I mean, if there's a conflict of interest and you find out there's a conflict of interest, then we'll have to remove him. But he can't spend any money. He cannot, without the court's commission, go out and spend any money.
Always we can keep my finger on you would be okay.
We got eyes on you.
You can bar it. You can bar it, Chris. You can bar it.
I'm not, we spent 20 minutes on one item.
I had a problem why you wanted so badly. Do you have anything else to add?
Just like things that you're passionate about.
The only thing is, is he can't spend any money. Everybody keeps on us he's gonna spend money. There's four million dollars. We, we went and asked the voters for that money. They gave us four million dollars.
None of those four million dollars is for phase one.
No, I know that. I know that. But, I mean, there's not gonna be this just influx of money spent. He does not have a checkbook. We didn't, we're not giving him a checkbook. We're asking for reports.
He's, he'll be reporting on how we spend. Our county has budgeted $309,000.
And he's not getting any more than that. Nobody's getting any more than that.
And that is, that's all we're paying to have these wins removed. And every, we can give reports at every meeting and as we go. And everyone will be aware of, you know, what the decisions are and how it's being done.
Ed, did you have something to say to the water? Were you ready to run?
Yes, I did, but I'm trying to calm down a bit.
Say it, Ms. Frankie.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I've sat and watched this court. Right now, we need to all work together. My suggestion to this is have Carl represent the commissioners and have like Ms. Hall or a citizen within Karnes County represent the citizens at these meetings. So everyone would know. You have the citizen in these meetings. You have Carl representing commissioners' court and heaven forbid, work together.
Thank you, Ms. Frankie. But you know what, Ms. Frankie, on top of that, any citizen is allowed to go to these meetings and say anything they want to say. Anybody can go.
If they know who they are.
And, and I mean, they're...
Or have a representative while we're there to have one representing the citizen and one representing commissioners' court.
I mean, we only control the court. We don't even control anything else. But I'm just, Ms. Frankie's just, you know...
That's a good idea.
She's just, she's just talking. I mean, I think, I think we just need to move forward somehow.
I don't think any more discussion necessary. I'll make a motion that we appoint Carl to represent the county, county for phase one.
And we can admit that to say there will be no money spent or no contract signed. Liaison only. Let us know what's going on. Sue, please stay out of the building.
I promise.
I'll second Mr. Pete Yarz's motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? James opposed. Motion carries. Number 11 is acknowledgement of assignment of Lisa Lillard, a chief deputy clerk with an increase in salary to $24,000 annually, is allowed in 2012 budget. Acknowledged as a full-time new employee, Brenda... How do you say that?
Arcelac.
Arcelac? Salary at the budgeted rate of $10 an hour is allowed in the fiscal year 2012 budget. That's Carol.
That was me. With the loss of Marilyn, we needed to replace a full-time person. And Lisa has the most seniority there now, so I'm, I'm assigning her to the chief deputy clerk. And with that, she has more responsibility, more superv- a more supervisory role with the other clerks. So I increased her salary, which was still within the budget from Marilyn's. And then we have a new girl, Brenda, who started last week.
That one was just acknowledgement, so we don't need anything. She's just...
So the increase in pay is effective for Lisa is effective when?
The Monday that the full-time started, so December 5th. I'm sorry, I should've put that. Do I need to send you anything?
Make sure to smile. One, two, so we know that changed the...
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is to discuss approved, disapproved investment policy updates. And that's Vi. Vi, Vi's been working, this is the one that we brought to the court before, but she had updates and she emailed me and I got some of the updates and some of them I didn't get because they were in the courthouse taking stuff down. And I did get printed, I printed some copies.
Of the policy manual?
I had LaWanna print me some of the, of the policy updates, which would be your, I guess, the part that you have with the outside auditors, right? Is that the policy update, the policy update itself?
From what I understand, the last time, we weren't changing anything because with the new law, something needed to be effect. The only thing in question is section seven, the internal controls. You wanted to change that to, or has been reviewed. That needs to stay to where it reads, "Investment officers shall establish a system of written internal controls which shall be reviewed annually with independent auditor of the county." I think that needs to stay as an annual event, not just because we've done it once and we don't do, ever do it again.
No, it, it has to be an annual event.
Right.
That's the policy it has to be.
Right.
You know what? There were some things confusing in there, Vi, and I talked to Janet Pittman yesterday because I think that it said, when we were talking, they don't approve it, they just review it.
Correct.
And, um...
They just review it. Correct.
Okay. And when we were talking, my understanding is if they approved it, they don't, they review it. So we have to...
That was the only person that reviewed it, has been, has reviewed it. But has asked to review it was Wayne Byer. We had, last year, when Janet then came, we had a copy of the investment policy for them and they said they did not need to look at it.
And the only thing that needs to be done is this needs to be approved through commissioners' court, but it needs to be the complete package. It's gotta be the policy. It's gotta be...
You already had a policy on file from '07.
Yes, it's on file from '07. But if we approve this one, it needs to be with this one. The whole package needs to be together. The resolution, the, uh, the office procedures. Guys, I put y'all in there. Hold on. It's got a red staple in it, the office procedures, and I'm spread out to the line. And there were some questions in the office procedures that, that I actually had. If I can find it, it's in a red staple. There it is. If we look in there, it says, "The county treasurer may reconcile bank statements..."
Okay, we are talking about the investment policy.
Uh-huh.
That's the only thing that you need to be looking at according to the investment policy on my office or procedures.
Okay, is this what the outside auditors have reviewed?
No.
Then why'd you send me this? What is it?
Because on the, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, the ninth bullet, it says the county invest, the county treasurer is responsible for the investment of county funds. On the real bold part of that, it changed where it's a little bit more specific on internal controls. That is part where we had changed that.
So that's the only part of this we need to look at?
Correct. Because it ties to the internal controls. "The controls shall be designed to prevent loss of public funds due to fraud, employee error, misrepresentation." And that tells you that I go to continuing training classes in CEUs and that training includes ways to prevent loss of public funds.
Okay. So that's what we're looking at there?
That's what you're looking at. That is the second bullet. "The county treasurer on an annual basis will review written internal controls of outside auditors to prevent loss of public funds."
Okay. Then where it says review, on this one, we need to get review to this one. So they're synonymous.
Review on which one?
The resolution? Where it says review on the bullet, it needs to say review on the resolution.
It already says review in the, in the...
No, it doesn't. It says, "Whereas investment policy updates have been approved by outside auditors, they can't approve anything." You see that? We have to, it's gotta be synonymous.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
You see what I'm saying? You gotta change that. And it's gotta be, we have, we're supposed to have the resolution with the investment policy. I talked to Janet, I talked to him yesterday, Janet, Lee and I talked to Janet yesterday. The one I talked to Janet, it should just be in a package. So we have your investment policy.
Okay, so everybody talks to everybody, but nobody talks to me?
I called you yesterday and then you called me back and I was already gone. And I called you twice. I started emailing you on...
And you were actually in our office yesterday and you go whatever.
I started emailing you on November 17th about this, so...
Yes, and I, I sent you everything that you told me to send you. And I sent you this resolution and never got back that anything was wrong on it. So I sent it to the...
You sent it to me three days ago and my email's been out for two and a half days.
Well, that's not my fault.
And so, sorry. And how do you start getting it? Huh? Well, it's because they started courthouse restoration. I mean, it's shared...
That has nothing to do with, with me sending you emails.
Why? How do you expect me to get an email at work?
Well, it's not my fault. I guess go to somewhere else where there's internet work. I don't know, but I sent this to you. I mean, I don't know what else you want me to do.
Well, we didn't know it was down here, so it didn't work. I mean, there's a lot of stuff down, but I can't, I can only work with what I get. But this, we have to make changes. We can't approve this as is. We have to make changes.
Well...
And it's gonna have to, it's gonna have to meet with the outside auditors. If we accept it as it is and it doesn't meet with what the outside auditor says, which is review because they cannot have any part of our internal...
Well, all we need to change on the resolution is the word review. Investment policy has, has been reviewed by outside auditors, which that needs to be done on an annual basis anyways.
Right. But it has to say review.
Well, then we can change that without having to bring it back on the agenda.
It needs to be the full policy.
And it's in my hand, right here.
So you want to do that? And I mean, if you want to sign this, this resolution like it is, we can, okay? But we need to scratch out review. And we want to do this as scratches versus...
Well, you just do the same thing you did with the highway department. I just correct this and the court gives you permission to sign it when it's corrected.
Which part are we on right now? Investment policy updates?
We're doing the...
Yes, I think so. And that, the next one is to sign the resolution.
So on the investment policy itself, there is no changes on there. Correct?
There should not be any changes on there except for it says, "Will establish," it should say, "has established and reviewed." That's the only part. The only part of the investment policy is there is one that says the county treasurer shall establish...
Okay, I'm looking at the investment policy. Karnes County adopted September 28, 2007.
Right. There's one section in there that says, "Shall establish," the county treasurer or the investment officer shall establish internal controls. It should say, "Has established and will annually review internal controls."
That's your motion?
Wait a minute. I'm, I'm trying, are you on the investment policy or on the...
I don't have my investment policy in front of me.
Are you reading my county officer, my county treasurer's office procedure?
No, I'm not. I'm reading, on the investment policy, on the very first investment policy, when you and I first started working on this, the very, very first one, I don't remember what section it's in. I will have to go and pull mine because I highlighted it. It says something in there about the fact that the investment officer shall establish internal controls. It was on that real long sheet you gave me.
This one.
You need to take it out and say, "Has established internal controls and will review annually without collateral charges." You've already established them now. This one should say, it says, "Shall establish." You already have them. See?
Well, that's because your policy says that you can't, once you do something, you don't go back and change your policy because it's been done.
No, the long one I have says, "Shall establish." Uh, "shall..."
The long one you have is probably...
Yeah, the other one is outdated then. This one's, this one's not the same one that I was looking at. I had that long one.
That was probably the ones that the changes go to for the first...
That came effective state. Okay, because this, this does not read the same as the one I had.
But once...
Okay, as long as it's in here like this, that's fine. But the one that I had said, "Shall establish internal controls." This one doesn't say that. So this one's more updated then?
Yes.
Okay, okay. That one's more updated.
And I'll get, I'll make, this is my copy, precious.
Just keep it, keep it all together.
Well, Carol's gonna have to have it filed.
But file it all together. And just change this one from, it needs to say, since I buy my loan, I'll check pay. Just change, and change, change Vi to be, be on that therefore. And just make the changes by bringing Vi. Right here. Now we get, I'll give you mine. Okay. Mine, you can take that. It's all about this part. And that's just criminal litigation for what we should do. Take that one and change it. Okay. Let them change the changes though, so they'll know what they are. Do y'all see that? The only thing I changed was, whereas this information has been approved by, by the auditors, it's reviewed by outside auditors. They don't approve anything. We do. We approve. And it says that this resolution be passed by, passed by commissioners' court. And that's it. That should take care of the changes. So the investment policy updates per se, that's not the updates. So we've already approved the updates because we've already made those changes. So we're, I make a motion that we approve the embal- investment policy updates because it does no longer say, "Shall establish," it's already been established and will be reviewed annually. And it says reviewed in there, right?
Yes, it has to be reviewed annually.
That's okay.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is to discuss approved, disapproved signing of the resolution approving the investment policy update. And we approve the update by, it says update in there.
Wait, you reviewed the...
It's on 22506. It went on 22606. We should be okay. So retype that and then bring it to me if we can approve it.
Okay.
So you're gonna approve to... With modifications?
With modifications.
Or amendments, whatever you want to call them. No, I didn't make that motion. I'm asking her. I was still talking to her.
I didn't make that motion either.
So I make a motion that we approve signing the resolution with the amendments noted in it. And Vi can bring it to me and give me a, allow me to execute that. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion here. Oh, sorry. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 14 on the agenda is to discuss approved, disapproved work to be done in the annex by Don Cruder Construction at no additional charge to settle Karnes County's claim of liquidated damage and finalize our contract. Here, Pete. I'm sorry that our printers, when we, our computers went down, our printers went murky there. So we just had to, we just, still be had red lines over there for juvenile probation so we could print it.
All right. I've been discussing with Kruger and Paul and everyone how to complete this contract. Get settled. As you all know, we've talked about liquidated damages. They had liquidated damages. In the contract, it said $1,000 a day. We have somewhere between 80 and 90 days. The number doesn't matter. We have to justify our amount. And LaWanna went through some items that I gave her and we came up with something. We could justify it from 70 to 85,000, depending what all we put in it. To settle liquidated damages, if we can negotiate this and settle, we got more to work. We need lawyers and hiring a mediator and doing a bunch of paperwork. Don Kruger's personnel and I think it is better if we can settle this out of court. So I've come up with an agreement here which reads, "The Karnes County offices' annex job has been ongoing far too long. We need to complete and close out this project. DTR has been engaged with Chris Macholik and Lester Colley about the building's needs and deficiencies. An attached list describing these items is identified as exhibit A. We propose that Don Cruder Construction Company supply and perform the materials and necessary labor on exhibit A at no cost to Karnes County. In exchange for this service, Karnes County shall accept this service in lieu of seeking liquidated damages as described in the contract dated, I don't know what the date is, but it's, uh, November 2009 or whatever, for construction of the Karnes County offices on the square between Don Kruder and Karnes County. We accept the terms and agree to release Don Cruder of liquidated damage claimed for the signed agreement below." And then it's placed for, suggests to shine, for me to shine, all the commissioners to sign. And then on the bottom, for Don Kruger, I have, "We agree to supply the materials and perform necessary labor as listed in Exhibit A along with any extra work performed during the construction phase when PPR was Correns County's agent, which he instructed or requested Don Kruger Construction to perform to expedite or enhance the construction progress." And then we have a place for Don Kruger's representative to sign that. Exhibit A, in the negotiation we've had, I received a sheet from Don Kruger listing some of these things, that, and some I took, and some I didn't take. He redid it. And it has a statement on there that says it's illegal, or no one is, is allowed to copy or submit this information without specific instructions or from Don Kruger. So I don't have prices on here. But what I have listed, but the, the prices of it comes to somewheres thirty-four, thirty-eight thousand dollars, because I added a couple items to the bottom of it that he didn't have on his list. But anyway, and the things that they did during construction, I had estimated it somewhere between ten and fourteen thousand dollars. I don't know what their incentive is. They didn't give me that, and I didn't ask them for it. So, in lieu of trying to seek seventy, eighty thousand dollars and not going to court, I wanna try to get forty, forty-five thousand dollars worth of work out on it to complete the annex, things that need to be done. These are the things that we have on there. Now, the number one item is a mud slab under the deck. That is a questionable item, because it is not required on original drawing. Kruger says they don't have to do it. All right, we don't wanna go to court about that. Architect and Terracotta say it has to be done to protect the building, because we have the water problem under it. They said the water's getting in from the outside. Well, it's not. The water was there, in my opinion. Anyway, so they're gonna put two inches of concrete underneath the pipes under the deck. Originally, I had asked them to replace the deck and take care of it and put a concrete slab on it. Well, they came up with nineteen thousand dollars. I think that's a ridiculous amount to pay for, for a concrete floor on that deck. Then I asked them to get a Trex deck, which is a composite material, which is waterproof, guaranteed forty years or whatever. And the price of that was thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. And I think that's ridiculous, too. It may cost that, but it's not worth spending that much money on that deck. So I wanna just put that mud slab under there, and then we'd do something different with it next year, to protect food, the water thing, to kinda satisfy Kruger, I mean Boyle and Terracotta. Okay, we have low walls and drainage walls. In other words, in the back of the building, there's the condensing units outside, and instead of worrying about the water there, I asked them to pour concrete in there, put a little wall around where the, where the valves are in the ground, that's a low wall, and cover that with concrete, so that'll drain away from the building. We won't have any problem with moisture getting in there. That takes care of our, our water infiltration problem in that area. Okay? Sidewalks at the east end, to make this complete, we need a sidewalk from Calvert Avenue over to the sidewalk that comes from the courthouse, so people don't have to walk all the way down. That door's open all the way down the end, because outside door's not open.
That'd be kinda where that driveway is being...
Right, they'd angle, cut that into that and put a sidewalk character. Then at the eat, at the west end of the building...
I see the type of people that's having it.
Yeah, okay, at the west end of the building, there's a, there's no sidewalk. There's a, a handrail sticking out there with nothing. Well, the architect called for a pad to be pulled over that handrail, no sidewalk there. So anyway, I wanna put a sidewalk there and go down to the street. Building board cabinet with glass doors, that's to go in front of the courthouse for posting a bulletin.
Inside or outside?
Inside, inside on the wall of the sheriff's office. Judges' bench and witness stand for the jury room, I mean for the courtroom, the multipurpose room. In other words, judges stand and witnesses stand would be up about twelve, fourteen inches high. A jury stand against a hall sidewalk on that side. That would have, I told them, two lifts, one four inch and one eight inch, two by four, plus three by four, and floor, step up, so the jury can sit there. And they'd be up above, they can see a little bit better. The judge would be sitting higher. That's what they requested. Now, the jurist box is the next thing. And then the signage on the doors, we have to have signs on the doors to complete handicap accessible, or whatever. I can't think of the right term right now, but anyway, we have to have signs on the doors. On the west ramp, was I had a request to put a no parking sign by the ramp there, because people can't get up that little ramp. I said, well, we can't put handicaps sign, it doesn't need handicap specifications, but anyway, we have to put, we feel like we need rails on that ramp, so people don't fall on those steps and fall down. And that's thirty-five, thirty-eight hundred dollar item there. I have some figures on this, which I'll, I'll go, but as I said, they said not to. Thirty-inch wide concrete drains on the grade in the back of the building. In other words, well, we have the slope down the back of the building, and it's water washing there right now. I wanna just put a thirty-inch wide trough where the water runs, where it run down that hill, let it concentrate and run down, so it won't have ditches running there until we get it landscaped next year.
It'll go all the way to the street?
No, it'd just go down the ramp in, and where it levels off. Because they, they may come out at some kind of computer parking lot or whatever. Okay, pending cooling device to make HVAC work properly in the computer room. The system over there is not designed right. The computer room is not on a, on a unit by itself. It has to work with about one-third of the building. And the computer room is supposed to be at sixty-six degrees. The people in our offices are not comfortable at sixty-six degrees. They have to have heat. If they wanted up to seventy-two, seventy-four degrees, and it gets to eighty degrees, they hire a computer room, the computers are gonna be picking on them. So, I just saw something this morning, they said we can buy about a, about a five hundred dollar unit to put in there, and then it into the hall. The heat out of the top of the room will go into the hall, and put a cooling, an extra cooling unit, plug it in there. And so I'm asking them to provide that. So I'm asking for these things, which I said, these would give us about thirty-six, thirty-eight thousand dollars worth of, of work, to settle our liquidated damages claim. I'm gonna present this, I'd like to present this to Don Kruger Company. And I'd like your permission to do that.
I make a motion to approve the work done in the annex by Don Kruger Construction Company at no additional charge to settle Correns County's claim of liquidated damages and finalize our contract.
Can I?
Go.
I think that's, yeah, Pete always, you always do great work. You always bust your butt out here for the county. I mean, I thank you for that. You do that, you do a lot of work for the county, a lot. Way, way in above the call of duty. Excuse me, Mr. Busman. On this one here, it's, they got, what's that amount of liquidated damages they have? Like eighty thousand?
Well, it would be somewhere around...
Somewhere around eighty thousand? If, like, right here, basically what we're doing is gonna save us around thirty-six, thirty-eight thousand, forty thousand to eighty, so it's about, we'd be getting about half out of a...
Yeah, no, the things they did, like, I had them raise those units in the, in the hallway there, right by the break room. I had them cut the ceiling out.
Yes, sir.
They did that. Okay, they did, they put the ramp in on Front Street, on Calvert Street, and Bogan made them make it out. Okay. I had them, I had them put blocks on this wall up here, extra, to keep it from leaning over. There's some on the south side of it that's covered with dirt. One of the others, I told them they'd take it off. Things like that they did. They dug out the sewer line for us out there at the street. When the city was tying sewer, Kruger did all that. They dug the line and provided some of the PVC conduit to dip out from under the concrete area for the computer lines to the jail.
So they've done some stuff in there?
They've, they've done a bunch of things like that. I don't remember what they all, I have a list of about ten things that they did through the job. I asked them just to do this.
Five, ten thousand dollars each?
So I'm saying it was, it was over ten thousand dollars, the stuff that they did for us, in addition to this amount what we're doing here. Then I told them, during the job, I said, y'all do this, we'll go easy on liquidated damages.
So we're looking at forty-five to fifty thousand maybe, that we've gotten out of them?
That's right. If, if they agree to do this.
If they agree to.
I think we're just trying to compromise.
And, I understand. And if not, if they don't agree, then we go, we're going to court for the, all the liquidated damages? And if they did those other ten thousand dollars, if they did the other work, just because they did it, to be friendly, they can't really come back on us, because it was just something that was asked. Those ten dollars, that other work that they did was just because you asked them. They did it out of good faith, not because they expected to get something out of it, right?
Correct.
So if, if they don't go for this, then we go to court with them? Which I'm pretty sure anybody would go for that, because like, you know, it's happened.
And I, I've never been in liquidated damages in court before, but I know people who have. And one man was telling me about it, he said, went to court, and we had, they had hired a mediator. Okay, someone gotta pay this mediator a couple hundred dollars an hour. Okay, each one has to have a lawyer. So you go in there and you state your case to your lawyer, and then that lawyer states their case. And then the mediator talks to you for five minutes, and then he says, well, I'm gonna consider this. They said the mediator's gone for two or three hours, and you just sit there and wait. They're all getting paid their time while you're waiting. Then the mediator comes back. So, it's an expensive thing, and it's an ordeal, and it takes a whole lot of paperwork, get it ready to present to them and all that. So, I don't like going to court for anything, but if we can settle this without going through that process, I feel like it would be a hard thing.
I think thirty-six or thirty-eight, settle out of court is better than eighty, and then paying all the expenses, and might be years down the road. They got probably a dozen secretaries and people, piles of paperwork. I, I think Pete's doing the right thing here. A bird in the hand, just worth two in the bush, for sure. I mean, I think this is a great...
Pete, may I ask you a question about those? I know those are all the things, like, remember how we had the issue with our door? And I think Judge Villanueva did, is that part of that repair work, too, that they would do?
I'll let you guarantee work.
Okay, okay.
Didn't the bad tech cooling device for the computer room, was that something that we're gonna have to pay for in this, in this deal? Or is that something that they made on their blueprint?
See, if you wanna go to court, and you wanna sue David Bogan, and you wanna sue Gonzalez, or whatever his name is...
Perez.
Perez.
Erickson.
If you wanna, if you wanna sue him, and you wanna get them to pay for that, that's another question. If we can get this fixed and get it to work. I went and bought two hundred dollars worth of heaters and spaces to put in it. So we try to help. And it, and you have to plug them in different places, so they don't blow circuit for that. It helps somewhat, but we can't depend.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm, you've already worked so hard on this, and I'm still bothering you. I'm just asking some questions.
That's fine, everyone is...
Okay, I apologize. This one here on number eleven, what do you figure that that, it would cost that to fix that?
Okay, we...
Just a round of...
And what we discussed on the phone, you can buy this unit for five hundred dollars. And what they say is not being manufactured, because it's a summertime item. We may have to wait to get, we have to just get by this. But, and put a vent through the wall, so the heat can go out of the top of the room, out into the hallway, which is getting heated anyway when this is needed. And so, it would cost them about eight hundred dollars, nine hundred, thousand dollars to get this installed, put in.
Tops.
Yeah.
Thousand bucks. So something like that's not worth taking to court for, right? Because it's a thousand bucks, right? And that'll fix, that'll fix the problem from here on in?
Well, Kruger says they did it before. It, it's about, the air conditioner says it's about five thousand dollars, forty-five hundred, five thousand dollars to redo the systems and change it, and put different controls and all that, that, the systems that we had.
Was that their fault that they, was that their fault they made a mistake, or is that...
Well, there again, I don't know whose it is, because they say, we proposed a design, and they didn't accept it. And I don't have all the design, all the plans, and all the plans is what through the, during the, for the planning progress, process. I don't have all that information.
So this, this thousand dollars, it's, it's a good fix, but it's a quick fix compared to what, who it was supposed to be, the way it was supposed to be? I don't know, man. I'm, you know, Pete does wonderful work, excellent work. I'm just, I'm not here, you know, doubting you, or anything. I'm just, you know, wondering myself about something. What do you think? You think that, I, everything else goes good. You think that the way they're gonna do it is good? You think we shouldn't ask for them to fix it the right way, and see if they'll settle like that? This way it would be just as good as the other way?
Well, they, Kruger might go for this, but they won't go for spending that, fix it the other way, because they're saying, that's not our fault, that's engineer's fault, that's architect's fault. We're not gonna do that five thousand dollars. They won't include that in here, I hope, because they're, well, experienced, they have...
And if it was the engineer, because they're the ones that draw up everything and do everything, can we write them a letter, Mr. Busman, and tell them that they incorrectly, you know, designed our building, and it's costing us forty-five hundred, five thousand dollars to... Because that's something that, that's what they go to school for, that's what they have, and change for.
To answer your question, yes, you can, but if you settle, and this is typically for what they, if you go, if you follow us here in the county, in our district court, their rules are that you have to go to mediation at some point in time, before you place the jury. I just had one, we went to mediation in B-Bill, and it's, it's required. You don't have any choice. It cost five hundred dollars for a half day. And we came out of there with, basically, well, it was a compromise settlement, which is what you're talking here. As long as you think the numbers that you're getting here, Pete has more knowledge of that than anybody else in here, I think, if you were out there with him.
Right.
And has a field court in it, but the thing is, as long as, what would happen? You go to your lawyer, they go to their lawyer, and you go to mediation, and he gives you something similar to this. And then you go back and talk to your client, and they say, yeah, we'll take that, and no, we won't take it. But if you take it, everybody, a good settlement is where everybody thinks you got screwed. They didn't get enough, or we paid too much. That's a good settlement. And that's what I think we've got here, okay? Just to answer your question. And you can go ahead, but I think it's a waste of time, and it would not be an excellent thing to do.
If Pete thinks that this is a good way to go with a thousand dollars, and we'll be fine with that, computer room and everything, we're fine?
Then I second the motion that we approve the work done in the annex by Don Kruger Construction Company at no additional charge to settle Correns County's claim of liquidated damages and finalize our contract.
So what happens if the cooling and heating issue doesn't work with this proposed correction?
Well, then we'll have to figure out something else.
Then we have to go back to the engineers' place, too.
Yeah, we're, I mean... Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number fifteen on the agenda is to discuss, approve, disapprove, the purchase of the Decatur Genesis II directional fleece radar with dual single K-band directional antennas, law enforcement directional sensor radar with stopwatch mode, KPH-NPH, price fifteen ninety-nine, and that's Carl.
Okay, and I, I don't, did y'all have a copy of the, will computer print out about this radar gun? Anyway, I think there should have been one. But anyway, our trooper that's out there writing about two thousand dollars, maybe twenty-five hundred dollars a day, and tickets, needs a radar gun. There's, there's people out there, they'll pass highway patrol. I mean, I don't know, I don't know where their mind is, but it's really dangerous out there, and they need to know that Correns County is moving forward, and this, this is not the good old boy county that it used to be.
Is this for Pierce's car?
Right, this would be for Jim Pierce's car. Is that right, Sheriff?
The only thing that I'm gonna ask, because I don't have a problem with any of this, and I see what you're saying, but did we not know we needed this at budget time? Because are we gonna have to amend the budget to do this now? Because the amendment's not on here. I mean...
I mean, it's a good, good thought. Appreciate Carl. I was kinda looking about, and your fellow president talked to you about it.
It's not an emergency.
Didn't you say that Shelby was gonna buy it out of his budget?
We talked to Shelby, but you kinda jumped out here and put it on the agenda. But I've talked through Shelby, because he's had some funds that's for hazardous material, truck traffic stuff. We can probably get the money from that, and take...
Okay, well, at any rate, I would like to see the county have a radar gun, if you can make that happen. And we don't have to vote on it, but I'd like to see that happen.
I would, too. It just comes back to budgeting. We gotta get these budgets. People have got to know what they need in the year, and start budgeting properly. And I mean, I see, you know, truthfully, I'd love to say this is emergency. We have people driving out there, driving like, I don't know. The other day, Pierce stopped a guy coming down the median. The other day, Pierce stopped a guy coming down the median, passing everybody just down the median like he was just on that show, you know?
That's exactly what I'm saying. And it may not be an emergency, that may be true. It may not be in the budget, but it's something that needs to happen. And we don't need to sit there and.
I'm glad you brought everybody's attention, Carl. There's something that could be happening, but I've actually got another radar gun. I'll tell you another unit for Pierce.
We'll take no action on that.
Do you have, do you have another radar gun, again, you can put in his car?
I got another gun, but it's not this.
Not this one?
Pierce kind of wanted, the one he called Carl about, which is, you know, but I actually have another one that we also bought.
So you are gonna be able to get a radar in his car without us doing this?
All right, I'd like to ask you a question. When Shelby was talking about that the other day, he said something about we might be able to get it for under three hundred dollars. He said, I'm just saying, he said something like that.
I don't know what three hundred dollars.
If I, if I get some grant or something, he said it might not cost over three hundred dollars.
No, not regular.
Now, unless he's going through emergency management, because the boat writes grants and gets everything.
It's everything?
He's, he's good at that.
I don't know what he said about that.
But now, this is, we, I pulled, I want to have another vehicle. And I'm trying to get, Pierce had a vision of this one here and that's why I had a computer on that view. And he talked about this and I tell him, I'm hanging on, I'm trying to get there. And that's why I've been on Shelby, trying to get through a, through a grant to this, through this way. And I appreciate the effort, Carl, you're bringing everybody's attention on what we're trying to do here. You know, at budget time, you know, it's a, it's a big thing, you know, trying to get vehicles and people and everything else. And some of this stuff slipped through the cracks, but you're trying to get everything done at one time. And I'm shooting a big number to everybody and y'all trying to grasp it. And some of this stuff should have been on there, like putting the cars and stuff. I appreciate y'all giving me three tire hoes and three extra people, but we're gonna manage. But I'm glad y'all brought it up. Thank you.
So we'll take no action on number fifteen?
That's correct.
Number sixteen is discuss approve-disapprove issuing deputies that travel out of the county a credit card to cover expenses that might occur such as vehicle repairs, tires, et cetera. And that's all, author, I mean, I know who you are. Carl. I'm sorry, Carl.
This has been brought to my attention more than once by these deputies that have to travel. They got a gas card and that's all they have. So if gas is all they need, then they're covered. But if they blow out a tire or, you know, break a fan belt, whatever happens, they have no way to pay for it. And I don't think our deputies should reach into their wallet, pull out their credit card, their cash, their check and pay for something and then go to the auditor or whatever and get reimbursed. I think they don't have a credit card, county card, to cover, you know, things that might have, unforeseen things like that that might happen.
In the past, have they ever, something has ever happened that they, comes out of their pocket? Then they?
There have been instances when they have been out of location of fuel facilities that we have issued credit cards for and they will pay for the fuel themselves and get reimbursed. I do not remember any instances of tires, mechanical issues, anything like that. I have a problem issuing the credit cards because we have trouble now getting the receipts just for the gas credit cards, much less anything else. And we can't reimburse without receipts.
So these cars never break down, LaLorna?
If they do, obviously they take them somewhere that will charge to the county. As I said, I don't remember any tires, mechanical.
So if you were a deputy and you go a couple counties over, you think you could drive on a flat tire and find somebody to fix it and charge it to them?
I would imagine they have a spare.
They have a spare.
Yeah.
And I think, I think if the vehicle breaks down.
Well, I'm just giving it for instance.
And it would call in any tow truck. I don't think there's any towing service that would refuse a deputy or DTS or any law enforcement. They're not gonna.
And in that same instance, I would issue.
I don't see them demanding the money right now.
I wouldn't issue multiple cards because there are multiple deputies that do transports. So if this was ever approved under the strict requirements of receipts being turned in to be able to pay the bill, I would issue one card to the sheriff's department and the sheriff's department would issue it out for each travel whenever they go.
We talked about this at length and we ain't got there yet. For a simple reason, we are taking longer trips. We just got back from Florida, had to get some checks. And that's just to make, make it up there and get back and pay for, you know, overnight motel, hotel, stuff like this. But this is something that happens, you know, we can foresee. Some of this stuff here, like I got a bench one, I gotta go to Amarillo to pick up a guy. And there is, again, like you said, I don't think anybody that turn us down, being a county unit, there go again. The man just has an extra amount of dollars in his pocket that we foresee that he's gonna go up there and spend the night. He has three gas credit cards.
And he has fronted the money for his overnight expenditures.
But it would be nice just to have that credit card so he has that security. A lot of these deputies, as you know, and thank y'all again for giving us a raise this year. A lot of these people are living very poorly, but this is what it is. I would like to have a credit card. Here go again, appreciate Carl. I know you're talking to my people out there a lot, but that's what it is. There is an issue. I like to have a credit card to send with them. Other than that, don't make it. Like you say, when you go to Florida, you go to New Mexico, on this transport officer, it'd be nice to have a credit card with a limit on it. And he could go out there and plump it down, because I mean, they call me all the time. On the trip to Florida, I got calls four or five times a day telling me where they're at, what they're doing, where they're staying and all this stuff. But it would be nice to have a credit card for these transport people. And that's basically what it is.
What happens if we have a limit on it and the repair?